Across the board, I mean, I think this tool is a great, a great idea. I just don't want to see it die down.
And she would be here tonight. She has a master's class and she asked if she could come to her professor and he said, "No." So she wanted to apologize that she's not here.
Right, it just would be great if we can try and get it out to the community. And I think if we can go to the town council meetings and go to and do a public forum or do some other things that can get the word out. Because some of these big companies are a tough nut to crack to get inside. I mean, I worked for one and it's, I don't even know what it took to have the time. But, I mean, I definitely don't want to see this die. And I know we have a tendency to kind of let things kind of go by the wayside.
So, the East Bay Chamber of Commerce is aware of our roadmap. But to Maureen's point, I was just going to add, in the past, partnerships really relied on internships. They developed this roadmap over the last year, really defined what the experience in their partnership would look like. I presented this concept three times already to the East Bay Chamber of Commerce. They're really excited and they're looking forward to be a part of the Community Share movement.
It would be great to put it in front of the town as well, to get, you know, town participation and a joint venture with all of us. Thank you for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions at this time? John?
Mr. Bento? Yeah, just a good question. And I know it's covered up under grant. Do you happen to know what the price tag was for that engineer and...
For the engineer to engage in the conversation? I think it was voluntary on their side. It didn't cost anything.
No, no, I know that. I'm just thinking in the future, if we start not having enough grants to cover as we expand the program, I just wonder what the price tag is for those guys.
I think they sign up to do it on a volunteer basis. So I don't think they get paid to do it. They've said, "We want the help, we agree with," and are on board.
I figured that was right there from Locust's position.
As far as I know, it's all on a volunteer basis.
It's great, okay. Thanks so much for all your efforts.
Sorry, before you move away, I just have a couple more questions. Actually, following up on Mr. Bento's question, I know there's no price tag right now for the use of these tools because of the grant. Does the grant have an expiration date on it where it'll eventually cost the district money to be a part of the roadmap and the planning tool and NEPRIS and Community Share?
It's, right now, it's a one-year grant. It's actually in contact with Digital Promise. It looks like it's been extended for a couple more years. And then we're hoping to negotiate that being a part of a core district that will never have a price associated with it. So that's the hope. But right now, I could give you a dollar amount. Some programs cost $1 per kid or $2 per kid, depending on the size of the district. We don't have a price tag yet.
And then the other question is, what does it mean for a company to become a part of the Community Share? What are they, like, right now, if there, I don't know what all of the requests are out there, maybe yours is the only one. But if there is a company that's interested in being a part of the Community Share, but there isn't currently a request for something that matches up with that, with what that company might be able or willing to do, you know, what does it, what does it look like if, say, the law firm that I work for wanted to be a part of the Community Share, but it was just willing to do something if and when in appropriate circumstances or rules? What does that look like?
So I think, just like, and again, for me, this is hypothetical because I don't, Shane is the one that has worked on the, working with the partners, not us. But you would be able to say, you know, this is the law firm and these are the type of topics that we'd be willing to talk to, or these are the types of real-world learning activities we'd be willing to participate in. And then we would be able to see that as well. So it wouldn't necessarily just be our share and you have to wait for us. We might be able to see what you're saying and that could resonate with me and say, "Oh, you know what, that's a great thing for my class." So I know we have you in the law classes. So that might be something that that teacher might look at and say, "Hey, I didn't know that this was out there." And now that you've put it out, then that you and the law teacher might say, "Let's kind of set up a share together."
Mr. Bradshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where do you see this in five years? Maybe you touched on it a little bit and I was taking notes and I didn't hear. But are we looking at this as going to be still like kind of a classroom-based, real-world learning? I remember you mentioned something, Mr. Lima, about getting, coming and coming in with a program or a problem and having our students work with them on it. And that reminded me of when I was in school with the University of Florida, you could either do a senior project in engineering or you could do what was called an integrated product and process team. And it was where lots of engineers of lots of different disciplines got together and worked with a company to solve a problem. And so, you know, we worked with Lockheed Martin down in Orlando at the time. But do you see this type of thing leading towards a senior project type where a group of students, whether it's some in your math class, some in marketing and the business, and some of the other engineering areas, get together and work on a senior project that they can, that put towards their big three or that sort of thing? Is that where, is that what we're looking?
So I, my vision, and I think it's quite familiar, similar to Wayne and maybe even Mario's, but is that I think we would like every student to have the opportunity to have a real-world learning experience throughout, like, every year or, let's, you know, at least one to two times throughout their four years here at Cabo High School. It can look in different, it looks different with, for every student. It could be part of their big three. We have a few students here that are using projects that they're doing in class that they are aligning to the big three, that they could easily get somebody in the field to help them with aligning it and presenting it. We have so many extracurricular activities that these students would profit immensely from getting experts. A law firm could help the debate team. You know, if I had somebody that are in different fields for the marketing competition for DECA, you know, we would, I would love to use those experts. Robotics, we're constantly looking for business partners to help those students to prepare and get themselves ready. So I think in five years, we want every child to have the opportunity to have a real-world learning experience here at Cabo High School. And it looks different for every child. And I don't know if that's your...
I would just say, to show up with the answer to yours is absolutely 100%. We just want them to see that it's, there's a reason why we're teaching them things in the classroom and how it applies to the real world, because that's going to make it a rich learning experience for them. So if it's a group that get together and they have their own project and they want to do it as a senior project, more power to it. We just want to get kids out there and apply what they're learning to have a rich learning experience. I personally have said, we talked about it earlier today, going forward, I want every single solitary unit that I teach to have a real-world learning experience in. So not just one per year, every unit. So if I've got 10 units I'm going to go through, I want 10 real-world learning experiences for my classes. Because that's how, how much I appreciate that one section that I ran and how excited I was afterwards when I saw my students sit there and say, "Oh my God, we really do use this stuff." That, for me, was everything I needed. So personally, a whole lot of them.
Mr. Bradshaw?
I was just going to say, one of my sons does a lot of that. And it benefits companies nationally to be able to say that they participate in local community activities. But it also helps the individual who's doing that put that on their resume if they're being recognized nationally. So there is benefit, not only to the companies that are part of it, but to the people who do the virtual learning or content classroom or whatever mode they want to be in, has significant financial and prestigious implications for them as well. So it's a win-win on both sides. And we just need to remember, to remind them that they get to have that kind of experience and they get to put that out there when they're doing their company portfolio to the rest of the world, they're investing money or whatever it is to show that they are part of the community. And by the way, Mr. Lima, I hope you have one of those, I loved, loved that day you had with all the people on the parking lot. Mr. Lima set up this program. We brought all these different companies from around here, firemen, coast guardsmen, policemen, search and rescue. And they showed them in their little trailers how they used a map to do their job and how if they didn't have a map, they wouldn't be able to do it. And the children, they were engaged 100% in every single one of those things that I went into. And that was really a neat program and I'm glad to see that we moved this far because that has to be five or four years ago.
Yeah, we actually talked about, I can't take full credit for that, I wasn't the department chair, but the people who did the most work were K. Booth and Victoria Bethline. They really did all the work. I just kept saying yes. So that was basically the sum total of me doing that. But yeah, and we've talked about something like that again, that you can connect with all the students to get some more people here. So our hope is that when people ask to be part of the Community Share, we can kind of look at who's in that and then set up one of those days with people who are already volunteered to be part of.
It was just very engaging, on a small level, but it was a start. Thanks.
Ms. Reeve?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank you both for your time and your view of these elements. And I was just discussing how much we appreciate your excitement, the services, the help that you serve through your faces. And it's made me excited, thrilled to see these sorts of things kind of play. I already have a short list in my mind and we plan for it to email to this room to make connections myself. So thank you. This is, this is great. I'm very excited.
My pleasure.
Yes, and I'll just reiterate, thank you very much for your time. Ms. Reeve?
So I think there was a lot of questions at that, at that point. And so just the last slide again, we have the roadmap that old Wayne and Maureen went over. This is just a different visual of that. And then just the other thing I'm talking about, just a segue into Mr. Bradshaw's question about when do you see us in five years? So I think many of you know there's an XQ Challenge out right now and it's about how do we redesign high schools. So Ms. Sanders is going to talk a little bit about the conversation we had with this team last week in our XQ Challenge.
I just wanted to give you a brief update on a team of teachers and students that are participating in the XQ Challenge. We went to a design day, I believe it was last week, it was in Newport. There were several other districts there. However, our district had the largest team. We had three tables, we had about 12 students, I guess, that participated and it was amazing. The XQ Challenge is funded by the legacy of Steve Jobs, it's been across the country for a while now. There are a number of schools that are already reimagined or redesigned as a result of the funding that they provide. So we are, we went to the initial design challenge, we learned about the innovative approaches of schools all around the country. We heard student piano, we saw some research on how real-world learning and student voice and choice plays a big role in their achievement and their successful graduation. And so, then at the end of the evening, the students generated their own thoughts and what they would like to see in their high school if it were to be reimagined. And at the top of their list, you can't see it very well, but on the left, and this is the students handwriting, is they had real-world learning. So it's making a difference. We know that our students are really benefiting from it. And as you can see from Seaman's presentation, our teachers are benefiting as well. Connecting teachers to people in the industry strengthens their own understanding of content and brings our programs up to industry-level standards. So from this event, we now have a lot of homework on the XQ site. It's open to the public. They have what they refer to as knowledge modules. And there, it's all about the latest research around adolescent learning and job opportunities, the future of the workforce and emerging trends in education and in college and career readiness. So we have all of that homework to do, the students are involved, we have our own Google Team Drive set up, we're all working through that, taking notes. And then on April 24th, we have a follow-up meeting where again, we'll kind of synthesize our ideas and that will go into a grant application that will be submitted to the NFA. If we are successful in the grant application, that will bring $25,000 into the district that will be for a year of planning with the experts from XQ and other districts of the 20 districts selected. And we will have a year of planning to more fine-tune what would our vision for a high school reimagined look like. And it could be the entire school or it could be a school within a school, which is another concept that we've been working with and looking for funding for to expand the PAST program, which is that flexible schedule to open it up to more students because of that. We obviously have strong interest from our students, so that's coming down the road and we'll be seeking parent and community input on that as well. Should we go through the planning grant and then at the end, we may be invited to take part in another portion of it and that would bring $500,000 into the school in order to help some of those, that vision come to life. So that's just a little bit about XQ. We're very excited about it. Our students are absolutely amazing in their thought process and they really take a ownership of this.
Does anybody have any questions about the XQ Challenge?
I don't have a question. I just find it interesting what this high school used to do. In the eighties, now has a name called PAST because we used to have that exact program here. In the eighties, the children went to school in the morning and went off to work in the afternoon or internship. And the children who were going off to college stayed in school the rest of the day. And we did that with a fixed schedule at the high school. So you could front-load all the classes they needed to graduate and then you could go out and learn how to be an automotive tech or whatever interests you do. So it's got a name now. I mean, things go around, you can only do so many things, but what Wayne had in school is now called PAST.
I actually have a question. Is there an intention or a plan for the district regardless of whether we're successful in moving to stage two and stage three of the XQ Challenge to develop and implement the vision that we have for a high school reimagined, to try and incorporate that into the planning of how we move forward with the high school, regardless of this being used as a sort of a mostly strategic planning tool beyond just a competition?
Yes, that's why we, well, we took advantage of this opportunity because of what we can learn from it. I guess it was last year, Rosemary Berensky, Assistant Principal at the high school and myself, we wrote a grant for the Barr Foundation, which is very similar, it does a lot of the same work. And that was again, to expand the PAST program and create that. And again, we'd love to do a school-wide, but we really feel that we need to develop the model more. There are a lot of layers and a lot of changes to conventional school structures, policies, programs that need to be worked out. The reason that a grant is needed is because you can't do all of the other aspects of your job and also be a project manager for something that's that significant. It also requires a lot of training from staff. When I met with several students from the PAST program who are also involved in this XQ, where they were very upfront about the fact that some teachers get it, that some teachers can actually put the student into the curriculum and shape the lessons and the learning around their interests and their aspirations. But not all teachers teach that way or have been trained in that way. So it requires a big shift in adult thinking. It also allows for flexibility to have integrated courses. So instead of taking a separate social studies course and an English course, it could be a humanities course that students can get credits for. Those are all things that we need a lot of time to work out and to make happen. So yes, to your point, we'll continue to grow that and want to do that, but obviously the funding from a grant would help build our capacity to be able to do that.
I think fair to summarize what you just said is, yes, we want to keep going forward, but we're going to need money one way or the other, whether it comes from a grant or someplace else.
Got it. Yeah.
Just the last slide.
Okay, we, you both, I don't know if you have...
Yeah, just quickly, the leadership, and I think Wayne talked about all the leadership moves already, about having a clear vision of what it is and the steps that we took in order to create a shared mission and vision. Bridging the gap, again, the high school teachers alluding to the steps that were necessary to bridge the gap between real-world and what happens in our classrooms. And the last one, just building the partnership. So that's the process we're in now. Again, we've been working with some of the bigger corporations, so CENIDIA is the Southeast New England Defense Industry Association. They've been involved at the middle school and the high school. Quapier, Rhode Island, they've been in the district several times. We have 46 students who applied for internships just recently and they're working with companies such as FM Global, AMJET, CBS, and a couple other, Hasbro as well, so we're looking at some partnerships. And they're a great liaison of getting our foot in the door as well. So again, the partnerships are really important. And then with the autograph, the autograph for supports for the educators, again, was the compelling why of what does a partnership look like? In the past, we've always talked about internships, but as Wayne and Maureen articulated, we're reshaping what those partnerships look like so that it could be a Skype interview. So every teacher, no matter if they're a PE teacher or AP calculus teacher, there's opportunities for a real-world opportunities. And then again, how do we leverage technology? Wayne could not have a conversation with somebody from Anais and Bush without having a platform. So again, this is a great way where technology can amplify great teaching and learning by making it easier to make connections outside the classroom. So those are some of the key leadership moves that we just want to... So at that point, I'm going to hand it back over to you, Mr. Chair. If there's any questions?
Thank you. I know that Ms. Ellsworth has another question.
Sorry. I feel like I'm a little bit asking.
Never apologize for questions. You know that I'm never anything polite either.
So the sale of Bristol, how much is the total cost of that entire program? And then how much is funded by a grant?
This year was $100,000. There was a small transportation this year, it was about $5,000 to the district and the rest was spread from the...
But what is it if we didn't get the grant?
The total cost, I believe, is about $50,000.
And then do we expect to receive grants to cover that missed spot coming?
We have applied for another grant with Harris House, so we applied for a $15,000 grant, but we have not heard yet.
And then, sorry, I'll be quick. So the, the citizens' want, the State House, how many students actually participated in that? What was the grade level?
I believe that, I know we had two classes of students going up. Last year, it was grade eight. This year, we are in transition with implementing a new social studies curriculum. So we're going to do it in grade eight and this next year. And then we're also going to bring grade six in and eventually it will stay with grade six.
So does everyone from grade eight get to participate or is it only a sergeant?
They, they all participate initially. So all the students work together in groups around topics that they self-select and then they present. And then from that, several teams are voted on and I can lead by the students to move forward to the State House.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw, I know that you had at least a comment.
Yeah, I just had a comment. Thank you very much for your time coming out. This is fantastic, as I echo what my colleagues have said. I also wanted to leave, leave another thought with you as we look to enhance our students and prepare them for life after high school, maybe not necessarily in a career, maybe not necessarily in college, but for just life in general. And forgive, I'll go ahead and apologize if some of you have seen this maybe on my Facebook page, but I'm going to read like a little excerpt, excerpt from this and you'll kind of get the gist of where, of what this school district is going. And I'm hoping that this is something that we might be able to implement for our, for our seniors here to help them with that transition. And this was from last year. It said, "On Wednesday, April 11th, Cabo High School hosted their first of what we hope would be many student professional development days. This idea was inspired by the various professional development meetings that teachers attend throughout the year. Teachers are given an opportunity to attend educational sessions on topics intended to enhance their career. The student PD Day followed a similar concept. What if the students could attend various sessions on topics that they are interested in and would teach them life skills that don't necessarily fit in the everyday curriculum? To meet this need, 13 community professionals spent Wednesday afternoon on the hill sharing their knowledge and expertise with students during the following sessions. Vehicle preventive care and maintenance, led by somebody from a car company. Dancing. Help out got a flat tire, led by a tire company. Resume writing and job application and college scholarship application, essay writing, how to wow the selection committee, led by somebody from a local university. Coding. Rent versus buy, led by somebody from a realty company. Yoga. Roadside emergencies and what to do, led by sergeant, by sergeant of the highway patrol. Taxes and other grown-up forms, led by Crystal or led by another company." But you get, you get the idea here. It's how do I write a check? How do I do my taxes? How do I change a flat tire? Life skills that don't necessarily fall within what we teach within the walls here. I just wanted to leave that with you because when we start reaching out to our community partners for opportunities like this, and also like this, to think about this type of student PD Day where we give them some of these life lessons that they might, that might serve them after high school. So thank you very much.
Mr. Bradshaw, that's an awesome idea.
Just, Mr. Brad, I'm sorry. Just so you know, we actually ran probably, I don't remember the year, about four, maybe five years ago, we actually ran that type of a system. Our guidance councils put it together. I don't know, I was in a room with, it was an engineer, it was someone who actually Scott Pellerin knew, our math teacher, because he was a wrestler, Roger Williams was with him as well, and he was an engineer or an architect. So our guidance department set something up where kids could sign up for whatever, you know, whomever that guidance got in. So we actually ran something similar to it and it was actually a great day, but for whatever reason, it hasn't happened again.
Thank you. That's fantastic. I'd love to see something like that come back. And I know, you know, the students here in this district, I believe they were actually just given a questionnaire, right? They were asked to respond to if there was a day where you could come to school, but instead of learning typical subjects, you got a chance to learn about things that aren't included. What would you want to learn about? And I think if that's something that we did a few years ago, you know, maybe it's time to look at bringing that back.
We have helped with our goal of getting every child here at Cabo High School.
Absolutely.
Yes. That will help.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabral?
We all know that education is cyclic. I mean, it comes around, comes around, comes around. We, as March is brought up, I mean, we've done this before. But I have to bring up a story about the career situation. I taught at North Attleboro for three years. And then I had a student who had an internship for a plumber. And some of the kids kind of teased him about the fact that he was a plumber and he was going to go and clean out their toilets and et cetera, et cetera. He was very cool. He says, I'll tell you what. He says, "When your toilet backs up and you're in trouble and you need me," he says, "I'm going to put on my big rubber gloves. He says, "I'm going to come to your house, I'm going to clear your toilet, you're going to be happy with anything. I'm going to take off my rubber gloves and then I'm going to write you up a bill and you're going to write me a big check." So that's, that's the situation we have out there. We need plumbers, we need electricians, we need cops, we need all those other skills out there and I hope we can get them to have this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else? Well, as you can see, we were all very interested and very excited to hear what everybody had to say. Thank you, Dr. Andrea, Ms. Sanders, Mr. Lima, Ms. Goff here, for the time you spent, and Mr. Driscoll, the time you spent to put this together, the energy that you've put in. the time you spent to put this together, the energy that you've put in to developing these programs thus far. And I think, I feel pretty safe saying that the eight of us at this table tonight are enthusiastically behind you and continuing to develop these programs as we move forward. So, thanks very much. And there, there's nothing else, Sergeant? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? All opposed? Thanks, everybody.